Can recognize any visitors with matters to bring before the council that are not otherwise on our agenda?
Oh, thank you.
Yes ma'am, please identify yourself and tell us your matter.
My name is Crystal Wiley. I'd like to address the council and my fellow citizens about the proposed fairness ordinance. I am a citizen of Berea for 27 years, and I recently wrote a letter to the editor and I just wanted to write or wanted to read an excerpt from that letter to you guys about my feelings about the ordinance. I realize it's a heated issue in this town right now. I said, "So though Berea is a small town, Berea's big in its ideals. This town was founded around a college that refused to go along with what was popular and educate black students alongside white students. That's why it's important for Berea, now more than ever, to embrace a fairness ordinance. Bereans should be the forerunners, as we always have been. In Tinsley's recent column that featured a satirical email written to Dr. Laura Schlesinger, while offensive to those who missed the point, it reminds us that you should not cite the Bible to support one belief while dismissing the rest. I believe the same point applies to the anti-fairness efforts of late. After viewing the March 15th council meeting, I was taken aback by the religious leaders of this community speaking out against the ordinance. The landmark legislation, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, with special exemptions in Section 702 for religious corporations, associations, or societies with respect to employment. So the argument that passing this ordinance is unfair to religious institutions is invalid." One citizen at the meeting said, quote, "No legislative body should pass an ordinance which provides protection to one group of people but encourages discrimination against another group of people." Another citizen at that meeting said, quote, "To force a lifestyle upon a Christian community restricts our freedom." While someone else asked that if the council does vote for the ordinance, are they going to vote on an ordinance for other groups such as Christian churches? Fact is, there are already special anti-discrimination clauses in place for religion where there are no such clauses in place for the gay, lesbian, and transgender community. The anti-fairness speakers kept citing God's law and how being gay was an abomination. However, that is not sound justification for allowing any citizen to be treated unfairly. If we are to hate the sin and not the sinner, and to treat others as we would want to be treated, then showing the LGBT community that we will allow them to be treated unfairly in our town goes against two of God's biggest rules. If anything, I see that as an unprogressive gesture on part of the Christian community to change minds and win souls through God's love. In one letter to the editor in last week's paper, a man said, quote, "When we publicly support sin in any fashion, we ourselves sin also. As I see it, it is not the sin we are supporting; it is the fair treatment of all people. Let it be God's job to sort out our sin." I hope he does not mind me saying this, but I encourage everyone to go back and read Reverend Kent H. Gilbert's letter in the March 24th paper. He gets it. He said, quote, "Such an ordinance would not impose any kind of lifestyle on others except to ask in matters of employment, housing, and other vital services that they treat every person as they themselves would like to be treated. It seems to me that Jesus proposed that in one of the highest ordinances in all faith, the golden rule. The same principle resonates through every other religious tradition." To that I say amen, brother. I would also like to say that one of the biggest lessons I learned while a student at Berea College was that even if Jesus is not your personal Lord and Savior, and even if you are not a Christian, you can still follow His example. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Erica Lawson, and I'd also like to address the proposed fairness ordinance. I was born and raised in Berea, and I consider, still consider it home. I currently live in Louisville, and I attend the University of Louisville. And I'm getting my master's degree in gender and sexuality studies, so I could talk endlessly about discrimination and hate crimes and statistics. But really, for me, it's when I tell people where I'm from that I'm from Berea, and they say, "Wow, it's such a diverse and welcoming place, and it must have been really nice to grow up there." And to me, that's what's important, and that's what this is about, is protecting people and not allowing people to be discriminated against. And that's the Berea way. And people shouldn't be denied employment, or housing, or public services based on their gender or sexuality. And I think that continues the inclusivity of Berea that we believe in, and how I grew up, and it's the core of who I am because of that. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maita Mendel Reyes. I'm a Berea citizen. I've been a Berea citizen and resident for 11 years. I live in 98 Pearl Street. If you step outside this building, I'm just around the corner. I also would like to speak in favor of the ordinance, and I appreciate the opportunity to say something. President Obama said that LGBT rights are not special rights; they're human rights. And that's really where I come from. I would be protected by this ordinance. I currently now am subject to discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodation should anybody choose to discriminate against me. I'm not asking for special treatment; I'd want equal treatment. I'd like to be treated the same way as my fellow citizens. And I'd like to know that other people are not going to be discriminated against on the basis of something they had no choice about. I wanted to give you an example of what it's like to be a lesbian in Kentucky. It's not an area that would be covered by the ordinance, but I do think it's illustrative, and I'm going to tell you about it. I'll tell you about it quickly. When I first came to Berea, I was in a situation where I didn't have medical benefits, and my partner was in the hospital a lot. Under the law as it exists, as it existed up until a couple of weeks ago, that meant that I had no right to visit her if I chose to visit her. And every time I went, and if you've been up for a major operation, you know what I'm talking about, there's a lot of sitting around time. You don't want somebody you really care about, somebody you love, to be sitting there by themselves. You want to be able to be in there. But I had no right to do that. I didn't have a problem with it. I came close a couple of times, but it always depended on luck. It didn't depend on my right as protected by law. As it happens, now I have that right under presidential order, and so does everybody else, including straight people. Anybody now has the right to choose who they want to come visit them in the hospital. I think that's an example of the way in which LGBT rights are not special rights. They're simply asking to be treated equally. I'm asking, I'm asking you to be treated equally. And I think when you treat me equally, it'll be the same as it was in the hospital visits, that everybody in the community will benefit.
My name is Lorna Atwater, and I've lived in Berea since I was 11 years old. My dad was at Berea College at that time. Both my older brothers are graduates of Berea College. My mom was at Berea College for, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 years. I don't know. I've been a substitute teacher with a master's degree in elementary education, and I've been working for the post office since 1986. And most of my friends are gay. I'm here to come out. Most of my friends are gay because I find them to be the most open-minded and the fairest people. I don't have a lot to say about why, or why not. I just want to leave you, everyone, with one thought, and that is, if there is a religious issue, which apparently there seems to be, and I don't know why. Honest, I mean, I'm a Christian. I was raised in the Methodist church. I'm a member of the Methodist church. And I was raised that Christians were supposed to be tolerant, and loving, and kind. And I will say that if there is one Christian in this city, in this state, in this country that can show me how their rights are infringed by extending rights to our fellow human beings, let them try, because I don't believe that we're hurting anyone's rights. I think that we're just being inclusive. And I will say another thing. I just keep thinking. I didn't come with anything written, because I didn't know who was going to be here, what I was going to say. This is coming, folks. It's the 21st century; you can't bury your head in the sand anymore. This is going to happen. Berea should be a leader in equality. Berea should be a leader, not a follower. Thank you.
I just want to start by expressing my gratitude for the speakers who began tonight. I think what they're talking about is a lot more important to Berea and its idealism and traditions. So, thank you, all of you. What I want to talk about is a lot less important, and I'll keep it short. I've just been really interested. I want to encourage the city council. You need encouragement every now and then. At least, most of you do. Maybe not Truman. He's...
(laughing).
What I want to encourage you about is the discussions and the articles that I've been reading about the possibility of some economic development discussion taking place in Berea. I just think that's really a good idea. A facilitated discussion that would be blessed and in some way followed carefully by the city council. Seems to me this is a good time for that to move forward. I don't know exactly what the city council needs to do to encourage it or make it begin, but I hope you do whatever that is, and then follow really carefully what develops. I was in a group about a week ago with 30 to 35, 40 people who were talking about this with real interest, and various points of view on what economic development means. But there was really clear agreement in the room. I think that it would be a good thing in Berea for a very public, inclusive, facilitated kind of discussion of this sort to go forward. Be a good time, would be good for the city. So I just encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
I wanted to take a moment and share my perspective as a local community member and business owner. I am owner and president of Consultwebs.com. And while my company is headquartered out of Raleigh, North Carolina, I have 30 local employees, and I'm actively interviewing for five additional positions. 24 months ago, we had about 900 square feet of local business space, and now we're pushing 7,000. When I was looking to expand my company, I naturally looked at Lexington, or Morehead, or even London, but it was Berea that was at the top of my list. And Berea was at the top of my list because it provided a quality of life for my employees that I appreciated. Berea provides access to resources; it provides affordable living; and it's a community that's always welcomed growth and diversity. And so my message tonight is that fairness is good business. Fairness is good business because it strengthens the quality of life of all our residents. Fairness is good business because it's expected in today's workplaces and in our communities. 100% of Fortune 500 companies in Kentucky offer non-discrimination policies that cover all of their employees. I offer a non-discrimination policy that covers all of my employees, and that's good business. And so I think it's good business for the city of Berea to pass a fairness ordinance that protects the rights of all of our citizens. So again, I think fairness is good business. It makes sense. So let me encourage you as a city council to pass a fairness ordinance that protects all of our residents and encourages and fosters the health of our business community.
Thank you. Would you give us your name for our record?
Of course, Lisa Vaughn.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Next, I'd ask the council to turn its attention to the minutes of March 15th, 2011. Do we have changes?
A move adoption of the minutes is submitted.
Motion by Ms. Farmer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fields. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, no. Minutes of March 15th are adopted. In addition, we have brief minutes of March 24th, special session. Did you see them? Motion by Ms., oh, Ms. Farmer wasn't there, so weren't you there?
No, I wasn't there.
Did we have attendance? Oh, yeah, I see.
Yeah, I was...
One, two, three, four, five. Mr. Fields moved to approve the minutes as distributed, second by Mr. Belando. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, no. The minutes of the special session are approved. Next. Sarah Care proclamation is with great pleasure. I guess I can say pleasure. It is certainly a privilege to make this proclamation. Whereas the Sarah Care Fund was founded in 2005 to celebrate the life of Sarah Elizabeth Kennedy, and whereas the Sarah Care Fund has accomplished many goals, some of which are assisting patients and families at the University of Kentucky Children's Hospital, aiding the Matt Ross Fund to provide children with the opportunity to play baseball and softball in our city park, and to provide scholarships to students at both Berea Community School and Madison Southern. And whereas this proclamation is meant to acknowledge Sarah, her parents, Eddie and Norma Kennedy, and all of her friends and family who have contributed so much time, energy, and money to Sarah Care, so that these good deeds can contribute to our community. And whereas Union Church will host the Sarah Care Fund benefit on Friday, April 15th, 2011, with the proceeds of the spaghetti supper raffle and auction going to support the UK Children's Hospital, particularly the Pediatric Oncology and Hematology Clinic, scholarships, and other youth-focused activities in Madison County. Now therefore, as mayor of the city of Berea, I do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th, 15th, 2011 as Sarah Care Week in the city of Berea in honor of the fund established in memory of Sarah Elizabeth Kennedy. And so I make that proclamation, and would like to present this to Eddie and Norma, and give you the opportunity to say some, say anything if you'd like to.[1130.08][1130.08](applause). I thought you were reaching for my microphone.
Steve, may I hold up this poster? Everybody, you'll see these blanketing the town very soon, and it's a familiar picture of Sarah. You've gotten used to seeing this poster, I think annually. And as you take a look at it, you'll see all the various entertainers we have coming. We're really proud to have our Nashville friends back who kind of adopted us, Doug Johnson, who wrote the song "Sarah Beth Skin," which everybody thought when Rascal Flatts had the big hit, they thought it was about our Sarah. Now Doug has become a wonderful friend, and he has openly declared that in fact it is Sarah's song. So he'll be here next week, and he'll be performing on television with us, and he'll be at the benefit. He's bringing other great artists with him, including Kim Williams, his friend, who wrote like eight or 10 of Garth Brooks' first big classic hits. So it's a great night from the Nashville area, and we love that. But we have all of our wonderful area musicians who are a part of it, and all of the support that you've given us. And I just wanted to show her a picture, you see. But we thank you, Steve, very much, and council members, we thank you. And if you don't have one of these and you'd like one, give me a call. I'd be glad it was right by your house.[1227.83][1227.83](laughter). I also would like to say Lisa's not kidding you when she says that her business is growing for all of you supporters of Berea Arena Theater. She has just, it's incredible the growth out there. Welcome good growth with wonderful people in that building. We have a pretty good time. Thank you all.
Easter potluck next week.
I'm bringing the candy.
Next on the agenda, generator bids. We have two bids. Well, I got the schematics. I got the technical data sheet. Looks very impressive.[1311.01][1311.01](laughter).
Give us an amount.
That sort of looks like $106,486, but I'm very tentative about that amount. That is General Power Limited. Cummins Power Generation, $122,000. Without objection, I'll refer the two bids to the Audit and Finance Committee for evaluation and recommendation. Both are over what we were hoping for, but we'll evaluate and report back. Next, bleachers for the new park. Mid-American sports advantage, mid-America sports advantage. $13,393.80, it looks like. Mid-America sports advantage.
Nice catalog.
Need some help there, ma'am.
Who sent this RFP out? Prices do not include installation and setup. Well, that's good to know. At $4,432.07 each delivered, something. Net seating capacity of 70 units. I'm not sure what this is, but that's, this is, who is this? BSN Sports. Without objection, we'll send this to Maggie and ask her, no, we'll send this to the Audit and Finance Committee again to evaluate and report back. And then lastly, financial software. Financial, financial software.
We have four bids.
Okay, Donald R. Frey. Scott Stickle with... Springbrook Software, Portland, Oregon. This looks like they're applying, I believe this is misdirected. This is really, they're applying for a presidential debate.[1693.83][1693.83](laughter). Just out of curiosity if there's any numbers in here. Springbrook. No, no. Okay, we got that one. KVS Information Systems, Williamsville, New York. And last but not least, RF. Original document, electronic. Logix LLC, Raleigh, North Carolina. Okay, well, we've got four bids there. Without objection, I'll refer this to the IT Committee to study and make a recommendation to the Audit and Finance Committee. Any objection on any of those? If not, then it'll be done. Did we have some citizens come in who would like to make a comment about a matter that's not on the agenda? Before we get into the real meat of our meeting, your spokesman, perhaps, Sarah Brumfield?
Excuse us for being late. We had the wrong time. I'm Sarah Brumfield. I'm speaking tonight as a 30-year resident of the neighborhood of East Center Street, which begins at the intersection of Center Street and Harrison Road. And I represent a neighborhood that is comprised of 10 homes and one vacant lot at 514 Center Street. I'm joined by some other members of the East Center Street Neighborhood Association tonight. The vacant lot that I'm speaking of belongs to Mr. Edwin Broadhead and Ms. Loretta Reynolds, who purchased the former Lambert-Harrison property from Berea College in 2005. The house originally on the property was demolished by Broadhead and Reynolds in 2009, and the lot has been vacant since then. The house, the original house, was accessed by the 10-foot public right-of-way connecting to a driveway that provided ingress and egress to the garage. The property is bordered on the western edge with another driveway, which provides the only access to the property owned by Ms. Deborah Payne at 510 Center Street. For over 30 years, the owners of the property at 510 Center have had use of an easement to enter, exit, and park on that driveway, keeping the narrow residential street less congested. The neighborhood recently learned of the intention of Mr. Broadhead to build a non-residential structure on his vacant lot, placed in the area closest to the four adjacent properties. We, as residents of the neighborhood, learned of the intentions of Mr. Broadhead from Ms. Payne after she had been informed by Mr. Broadhead that she was no longer permitted to park on the easement, which is the only ingress and egress to her home, and that he would have her arrested if she persisted in parking in the driveway. No other property owners have heard from Mr. Broadhead of his intentions for construction. Our neighborhood association has subsequently met with the Codes Department and Mr. Dale Van Winkle to learn more about Mr. Broadhead's plans for non-residential improvement on this lot. This structure he proposes to build is significantly larger than any of the surrounding homes, and five times larger than the existing garages on the street. We have questions regarding the use of the two-story structure and the impact it will have on our quality of life, our property values, and safety and security in the neighborhood. We are here tonight to inform the City Council of our concerns regarding the placement of the proposed two-story garage and the impact the restriction of off-street parking for the Payne property will have for residents and for the safety of residents on our narrow street. Several years ago, we faced a similar safety concern at the other end of our neighborhood when on-street parking obstructed ambulance access to an elderly resident's home. We have also begun discussions with the Codes Department for initiating the process of becoming a design overlay district. The East Center Street neighborhood has been a congenial community where communication and cooperation have been the norm. We are coming to City Council before taking legal steps regarding our concerns. We are here to ask for three actions. Number one, stop the construction on 514 Center until a design overlay plan is established by the neighborhood. Number two, require Mr. Broadhead to submit a notarized letter of intent detailing his development plans for 514 Center Street. And number three, commit to protecting the 10-foot public right-of-way. For further details, I share with you the letter we presented to Mr. Dale Van Winkle and the Codes Department, who have been very helpful in working with us, and we want to thank him. And they outline our serious concerns with this development and the lack of transparency and communication from Mr. Broadhead concerning his intentions. And I'll pass these out. That's our statement, and if anyone has any questions...
Yeah, I have a question.
Certainly.
Have they started construction?
No.
They have not? Do you know when they're planning on starting?
No. There's a building permit there that he has a building permit...
Does he have a building permit?
Yes, yes. He has a current building permit.
We have the letter. Are there any other questions? If, if there are questions, do you have contact information?
Certainly.
What's the mail-in address, or...
I can give you our phone, home phone number, Brumfields. It's 986-7410, and William Brumfield is available.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for here.
Next, under Old Business Strategic Plan. We have met, devised at least the first draft of a plan. Is the council ready to consider this further? Hopefully, we moved to adoption at some point. Have you had a chance to review the environmental scan and the redrafted strategic plan? What's your pleasure?
I would move the adoption of the strategic plan.
Motion then to adopt the strategic plan by Ms. Farmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wagers. Discussion, comments? All in favor then of adopting the environmental scan and the strategic plan as distributed? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Plans adopted for 2011? Thank you. Next, Resolution 01-211, FEMA.
Resolution 01-211 is a resolution of the City Council of the city of Berea, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to apply for a federal funding, from the federal, apply for federal funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Kentucky Division of Emergency Management, in the amount of $200,000 for the flood hazard mitigation plan, approving the federal funding agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute related documents.
May I have a motion then on the resolution?
So moved.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Kirby?
Second.
Second by Ms. Farmer. Discussion? Questions or comment? All in favor of the resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Resolution is adopted and signed. Next, Ordinance 03-11.
Ordinance 03-11 is an ordinance of the city of Berea, Kentucky, amending the 2010-2011 fiscal year budget for the city of Berea as follows. Amends the general fund revenues from $4,624,676 to $4,728,832. Municipal road fund, road aid revenues from $117,101 to $201,736. Infrastructure loan from $50,000 to $68,000. Tourism from $597,000 to $845,52. Industrial development from $661,600 to $663,064. Capital project reserve from $988,850 reduced to $831,917. Police restricted fund unchanged. Berea corridor engineering, $140,000 to a negative $68,890. I assume that's reimbursements.
There's a movement of fines from...
Police restricted fund from $30,060 to $10,060. Mentalist Pike Engineering unchanged at $700,000. Land Security, CDBG are unchanged at zero. CDBG Renaissance Chestnut Street from zero to negative $34,147. Transfer funds, Berea City Park from zero to $76,61. May-D Road unchanged at zero. Prospect Street upgrade unchanged at $2,576,100. Traffic study unchanged at $480,000, and US 25 North unchanged at $100,000. Total revenues, $11,031,981, up from $11,020,587. On the expenditure side, the general fund used from $10,209,62 to $9,999,46. Municipal road aid increased from $200,500 to $450,500. Infrastructure loan unchanged at zero. Tourism expenditures decreased from $1,577,172 to $1,453,712. Industrial development decreased from $732,362 to $632,362. Capital project reserve decreased from $1,013,850 to $837,850. Police restricted fund unchanged at $5,000. Berea corridor engineering decreased from $140,000 to essentially zero. Police restricted fund increased from $2,000 to $23,143. Mentalist Pike Engineering unchanged at $700,000. Homeland Security and CDBG sewer treatment plant changed at zero. CDBG Chestnut Street expenditures unchanged at zero. Berea City Park, $313. May-D Road, $13,824 unchanged. Prospect Street upgrade changed from $2,576,100 to $2,576,350, and increased $250. Traffic study at $480,000 unchanged. US 25 North, $100,000 unchanged. Total expenditures decreased from $17,749,870 to $17,263,106. Ending fund balance, 79, it's not right, $798,132. Comment, I went in the wrong place. Recap of balances, total funds available, revised budget, $18,061,238. Total expenditures, $17,263,106. Ending fund balance, $798,132. Proprietary funds, total income up from $14,733,700 to $15,031,935. Total expenses, proprietary funds increased from same amount, $14,647,978 to $15,084,478. Other expenditures, proprietary fund increased from $2,556,893 to $2,942,678. Section 2 provides that each of the amendments are determined to be for a public purpose and in the interest and the benefit of the city of Berea and its citizens. Section 3 ratifies the provisions of the existing budget ordinance, except as amended herein. Section 4 is a publication requirement. This is a first reading.
This is a first reading to amend the city's budget. The city operates on a fiscal year. Our budget runs from July 1 to June 30. Federal government runs from October 1 till September 30. And since last October, federal government still hadn't adopted a budget yet. Had been operating on continuing, what do they call them? Continuing resolutions. Continue to fund the government temporarily until that is put together. And what, there is, Secretary Geithner, the treasurer, notified the federal government that he anticipates about middle of May, we're going to run up against the federal debt ceiling. By law, unable to incur any more debt without some further action. But at least our House is in order. Subject to the amended budget being approved next meeting. The pressure's gone. Next, Ordinance 04-11.
Little shorter. This is an ordinance of the city of Berea declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing it to be sold. There is a, this is attached to the ordinance. It's directed, directed to advertise it according to law and sell it. First reading.
Item 12, Ordinance 05-11.
Ordinance 05-11 is an ordinance of the city of Berea, Kentucky, changing the zoning classification of property described herein on by the Berea Industrial Development Authority, from I-2 manufacturing to B-2 commercial. I believe it is at the end of May-D Road where it's I had to return to the east. Describe it, first reading.
City council acts by way of passing ordinances. The ordinance is the local version of a law. And as you might have gathered, it takes two readings before there's a vote, and an ordinance is voted up or down. And if it's approved, it becomes effective after it is then published in the local newspaper. All of these have been first readings. Next, Ordinance 6. 06-11.
Ordinance 06-11 by tile is an ordinance of the city of Berea relating to heating, air conditioning, and ventilation contractors, providing that the code of ordinances be amended by adding Section 71 320, which adopts the provisions of state law providing for the regulation of heating, air conditioning, and ventilation contractors. First reading.
Item 14, John Pennington is currently serving on our planning commission. His term has expired. I bring his name back to you for reappointment for a full term and submit his name tonight for reappointment and would ask for a motion to approve that nomination.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Farmer, second by Mr. Little. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Next, Board of Adjustments. There is a vacancy on the Board of Adjustments, and I submit the name of Martin Richards to you to fill that vacancy. Mr. Richards currently lives on Holly Street, at the corner of Holly and Holly Hill, I guess. He is currently the director of Community Farm Alliance, lives in Berea, was trained as an architect for about a decade, worked as a contractor. I believe that he's well-qualified to serve on the Board of Zoning Adjustments and submit his name and would ask for a motion to confirm that appointment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fields?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kirby. Any comments, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Mr. Martin is appointed, or Mr. Richards is appointed. Any department head have a supplement to the written report provided in the council packet? Chief Gregory?
Mayor, City Council, just want to remind everyone about this coming Saturday, we'll be hosting a 10K and a 5K walk at the former Panasonic factory. Start on May-D Road and go use our shared use path. So encourage everyone to come out. And all the proceeds will go for Special Olympics. So it's a good cause, and we invite you all to come out.
What time does it start?
Nine o'clock, sorry. Be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Questions for our good chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other department head? City administrators report?
Bring you up on a few items of business that's been going on around town the last couple of weeks. I do appreciate this evening to the passage of the resolution for the $200,000 grant from FEMA. Paul has been working with CDP Engineering on this. This will be an opportunity for us, if we're allowed to receive the money, to work on a complete master plan of all of our watershed areas and drainage situations within the City of Berea, which will augment those plans that we are presently working on. As we continue along with that, we continue to clean out our streams throughout the city. We NRCs, and I always get that confused, but as you know, a few weeks ago, we announced that we received a $30,000 grant from them to clean streams. They came in and did a survey of the work that had been done with our street department, and congratulated the city on the work that had been done. And in addition to that, gave us the opportunity to apply for another $6,000. And it looks as though we'll be granted that particular money. So that helps as far as the city with the labor and our equipment that we're using to clean streams. And we're making quite a bit of progress, and it's very gratifying for them, and also Mr. Schrader, as he's been overseeing that to know that we're doing it and doing it correctly. Also working with the street department, we're establishing a matrix for the recording of data for all of our storm drains. In the next few weeks, we'll be going around walking the streets with the GPS units, making sure that we have noted all of our storm structures, what type of structure, what size that they are. This gives us a leg up as we go through and looking at our storm water management systems. And also make sure that we're aware of where each one of these storm drains are so that we can clean them each and every quarter as we go throughout the city, and many times even sooner than that. Another project that we're working on, as you notice, on Rawling Street, rebuilding the curbs. They had all fallen, and we've got those back up to pavement level. We're presently working on the radius from Rawling Street onto Center. The next couple of weeks, we'll try to get that particular portion of this project built. Also, we'll be removing quite a bit of sidewalk going back toward Center Street, or back toward Short Street, excuse me. There's several irregular blocks of that sidewalk in there, presenting some trip area. So we are going to replace those areas of sidewalk while we're there. Been working with the state in the last couple of weeks. As you remember, two years ago, we received $128,828 in a transportation enhancement grant. At that time, it was federal money. Last year, it was turned over to the state. We signed a new contract with the state. Between my desk and their desks down in Frankfurt, it's been sort of lost for the last six months. And we have found that and identified that money this week. This is the money that will be used for the bridge for the Indian Fort charity's path. And it's our intentions to continue to work, and we'll bid that project out in June of this year. We had last Thursday afternoon, a project meeting with the state, here is in construction, and several representatives of the city on the Prospect Street project. It's continuing along very well. And as the weather turns, I think for the better, we'll see even more rapid progress on that project. Our concern, especially that afternoon, was the number of yards in the area and drainage from those yards having with the new... That has been presented to us, problems, drainage in yards. So we were looking at a system of yard drains. And they are... Ask HMB Engineering to design those systems for the yards to drain. And we'll be reviewing those so that we can take care of those problems. We're not there to cause problems, but help to solve a number of problems in that area. Those yard drains will not be state-owned, but they will be city's. So it'll be up to us to maintain those once the project is completed.
Have we got to pay for them putting them in?
No, sir. It's part of the project. We've also worked with District 7 during this past week on the stabilization of our signal lights at the intersection of 25 and 595, or Main Street and 25, however you want to look at that. Think we've all encountered the problem of pulling up to those lights, no matter what direction you're going, the wind's blowing, they're blowing around a bit, and you don't know which one to... Which green light to go on, and which red light to stop at. There could probably be a partnership. The state no longer places mast arm lights. So we're asking the state to design those lights with new cable and pole. And then if the city, we'll provide funds to put the mast arms, which will resemble what's at Boone Street and Chestnut Street. That way, we have them stable. So those are... I'll be bringing that forward as they get me cost, and as we work on our next budget. Continue to work with CSX Railroad on the crossing arms at Mayday and Menelus. The past week, we were notified from the governor's office that there will be a participation of the state of $100,000 on that project. We hope that sometime this week that we get from... Receive from CSX Railroad a schedule and also a final plan for those arms. Some projects that we're working on, we have an area in Elkin Street on a lot out there that's in one of our alleyways that's holding water. As soon as it dries up somewhat, Paul will go in and do some topo of that particular area, and we will remedy the water problem, hopefully in that area. We've had a problem of some of our drainage structures on Rose Court backing up and stopping up. We've got them now open. We're doing a survey of that area to see the best thing, what we can do to help that neighborhood release that water more rapidly. And it got about six feet deep in that area about three or four weeks ago during the rain. So we're cleaning out the channel, cleaning out that waterway, and working on a plan to open that up and keep that open in the future.
Which one's Rose Court? Is that the one that butts up to Pennington?
To the... Yeah, turn left, Pinnacle Street. All that water from Pinnacle Street in that area comes down and through that channel. And it has grown up, and some debris has gotten over in there and stopped up that drainage structure. So we're devising something that will go over the front of the structure to keep that from going in there, and also to clean out that area a little better. We've also installed drainage along Maple Street and helped those neighbors down there as they've encountered a problem. And as far as we've also... Then last week, on into Baldwin Street, and redressed several yards there that was part of our drainage project down there. This past week, with Mr. Blackburn, we had a meeting with Prime Group. Prime Group is our consultants for rates for our utilities. We've talked to them about looking at all of our rates, electric, water, and sewer. And as we provide them with information, they'll try to get things back to us so that we'll have qualified data to talk to everyone about our rates and where our utilities stand during the budget process. Our fire department is doing a remodel of Station 2, part of their living area. They're doing the work themselves. We've just purchased the materials, and they're doing an excellent job in that particular area. Two of our police cruisers have... We've received those. They're presently in Lawrenceburg, getting the stripes on and all the lights and bells and whistles on. And we'll bring them here, and after they're here, the radio system will go in. So in the next two weeks, we should have two new cars on the street with another couple of units to come in before the close of the fiscal year. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Stone?
Do we have any damage yesterday in the water, the storm?
No. We... As far as I know, as far as the storm was concerned, we did not have any damage or any problems. We had an electrical problem at around the park area, but that was going on prior to the storm. So as far as I know, Mr. Fields, we didn't have anything.
Good. Thank you.
I'd like to make one more comment. It's April 12th, in the afternoon of April 12th, we will begin interviews with several candidates for the manager of utilities position.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Just have one comment related part to some of the opening statements. I've received several suggestions from council members that the fairness issue bears studying, and would just like to say that it is eminently appropriate if the council so feels for this proposed legislative action, for the council to have a legislative committee to study the issue as presented by the Human Rights Commission group from Frankfurt, as various comments that we've had from citizens. Is the council interested in having some kind of a committee to work on that, to make a recommendation to the full council?
Yeah, I would like to be on that committee, Mr. Mayor. I think we should have one.
Well, you want to chair that committee and see about picking some members?
If nobody else wants to, I will, and ask some other people to help out.
So Ms. Kirby, Mr. Truman, Mr. Fields, is there a third? Mr. Wagers?
Is there a limit to how many we can have on a committee?
Certainly not, but typically...
Or typical?
In the past, we talked about trying to stay below a quorum. However, we have also learned that any committee is essentially open meeting, public meeting. So I... I guess what we typically do is say have three committee members, but then other interested parties could certainly join and discuss. But then I will recognize, to the extent you might need me to recognize, that the council has formed a legislative committee composed of Ms. Kirby and Mr. Fields and Mr. Wagers to study this issue, and then ultimately, at some appropriate time, make a report back to the council. That's all I have. Council comments? Mr. Fields?
Yeah, a couple of things. I want to express my concern and appreciation for you people that came in tonight and express your beliefs and concerns. I really appreciate that. That's your right, and that's what you should do. And Sarah Care, I will support that, big time.
Mr. Belando?
No comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you want to mention your... The meeting?
Oh, yeah. On the 25th of April, I'm going to host a community forum at the Berea Community School Gym. It's the elementary gym. It's going to be at 6:30. And we're just going to... I'm going to ask folks from the City of Berea to maybe speak to their concerns. Maybe we'll find out what things people can have, and what ideas people have to make our community a better place in which to live. It's already a good place to live. But, you know, as we grow and develop, there are... I'm sure there are things that you all have thought about that we haven't thought about. I also realize that, for instance, when I was going around... Campaigning, I felt that there are some people who didn't realize... I know that we became aware that there are many people who don't realize about what's going on within the city, and that the city is already trying to deal with some of the problems that they had concerns about. And so I think that's a... It'll be a... I think it'll be a good dialogue. I hope it won't be a dialogue by which people start complaining to the point where it gets uncontrollable. But like Billy Wagers told me, you're stupid.
You said it was a stupid idea, and I just agree with you.
No, I didn't say... I said it may have been a stupid idea. But anyway, I would like for you all to come. 6:30, the 25th of April, at the Berea...
Community School?
Community School Elementary Gym. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Wagers?
6:30.
Ms. Farmer?
I'd like to echo Truman's welcome to all the people who came tonight, and those who spoke, and those who didn't, and come back again. Thank you.
Mr. Little?
No comment.
Ms. Kirby?
I would also like to thank the folks who came tonight, and the folks who came to the previous council meetings to talk about what is going to be a very interesting conversation. Look forward to working with Mr. Fields and Mr. Wagers in starting to address this issue. And would encourage you to continue to speak out. I'm sure you will. Would also like to encourage folks to attend Sarah Care on the 15th of April. As the Kennedys have said in the proclamation, it's a very wonderful event, going to a very worthwhile cause. Also, would like to ask that we start to talk about the economic development issues that Steve Vois mentioned, and whether or not we're going to have a facilitated discussion about economic development. Would like to get that on the table.
How would you like to do that? Work session, or do you...
I suggest we have a work session, too. I mean, we've talked about it in different venues, and perhaps a specific work session to talk about how we would proceed. I would like to recommend that, yes.
I think that's a good idea.
We've been trying to gather the names of some facilitators, and we'll continue to do that, and then focus it toward a work session specifically geared to that.
Great. That's all.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.